Call the meeting of the Mount Clemens Board of Education Order. Call or roll, please.
Ms. Collins, here. Mr. Reno?
Here.
Dr. Rickman?
Here.
Ms. O'Neal?
Ms. O'Neal said she may be here. She's trying to make it. She may be late.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
And Ms. Walker?
Here.
A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, the citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens of the Mount Clemens Community School District, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. I ask that you come to the microphone and state your name and address. Also, be mindful that you have three minutes to make your inquiries or to make your statements. Also, you may not receive a response to your particular inquiry here this evening. And last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments. Last call for citizens' comments. Hearing or seeing none, moving the agenda. Next on the agenda, action item, item five, consent agenda. Under the consent agenda this evening, we have five A, approval of minutes, A1, December 15th, 2021, regular meeting, A2, January 5th, 2022 organizational meeting, item A3, January 13th, 2022, committee of the whole work session, item 5B, approval of bills for payments, item 5C, new hires, one, Mr. Bill Melching, and D, 5D, policies for second reading and adoptions, 8450.06, it's new COVID-19 vaccination, testing, and face covering policy. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda as presented.
So moved?
Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, Mr. Monk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We need to make adjustments to the January 5th, 2022 organizational meeting minutes. Dr. David McFadden wasn't present, but we had him recorded as voting because of the Open Meeting Act. We need to make that adjustment, so I had our secretary rewrite that, and so it shows David McFadden on the phone.
Right.
But we took it out as far as voting.
Understood, yes, sir. So has that correction been made, or are you asking for that correction?
Yes, Paul, yes, it has been made.
Okay.
Yes. David McFadden is not present for each vote.
Yeah.
Got it, okay, all right. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call or roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
And Ms. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Next on the agenda, information items, item six, coming out of the business committee. These are informational items. If you have any questions, comments on the reports, just speak up. Six A, any questions, comments on the financial reports? Item six B, contract listing, plural. Item six C, facilities listing. Takes us to item seven, superintendent's comments.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right? Okay. First of all, I would like to welcome David Feminino to our school board meeting this evening. Mr. Feminino, he works at Mount Clemens, owns his own business, and is interested in being a positive member and influence in our school community. To that end, he has donated to Mount Clemens a Mount Clemens hoodie to every single student and staff member, including our board members in the district. So you can see several of our staff members have these on. One of our students has this on. There you go. So the students began receiving their, and staff began receiving their hoodies on MLK Day. The students who volunteered and participated in the march were given their hoodies ahead of the rest of the student body. They really, really love the hoodies. The kids have all been really positive when they talked to me about them, and we're grateful for Mr. Feminino for donating to us. The partnership isn't ending there. Mr. Feminino has volunteered to be a part of our school community by speaking to our students. I'm connecting him with Emily Wallace. I have to keep, I always want to say Emily Holt, but Emily Wallace, to talk about speaking to our students in advisory, and I'm also hoping that he can join us and read to our younger kids during March's reading month. I'm looking forward to a strong and long partnership with Mount Clemens, with this business owner and many others. And Mr. Feminino is here tonight, so would you like to come step up to the mic and?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Superintendent Beals. Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to be here as well. I'm proud to be here. I'm thrilled to be part of this community. Our offices are literally within walking distance of the high school, and I want to continue to be part of this organization, this community of students. I want to propel these students forward in any way, shape, or form that I possibly can. I'd like to thank Monique for taking my call. It was on a July day back in, not this past summer, but the COVID, but the summer before.
Yeah.
It was about 100 degrees outside. It was only about 95 in your office. But we're correct.
Yeah, no air, remember?
No air. And we, I expressed that I wanted to help the community and see what it is that I could do to help these kids and help everyone move forward. And I believe you came up with the idea, and we sort of hatched it together, of providing some level of school pride and level of warmth to these students, so that they can be reminded every day, they can recognize each other as being fellow students. You know, if they go to a football game or a basketball game, or just out in public, they can recognize each other and have either, butched the bader on their chest. I think it's important for school pride. I think school pride has taken a hit during COVID, so having kids, you know, be able to be back together and recognize one another as their fellow students and their fellow peers could engender some school spirit. I want to be a leader in this community. I want to be a leader for these students. I want to hear about every opportunity that I can do to help these students with mentoring and with speaking engagements, or any type of, you know, career nights, or anything I can do to guide these students and help them to move forward. I came from this community. When I lived in this community, it was called Mount Clemens. I'd lived about six miles from here. They changed the name to Clinton Township, but I don't know what year it was, but I lived here in 1976. And so at some point in time, where I was Mount Clemens, we became Clinton Township. But I grew up in this community. I grew up near, very close to downtown Mount Clemens. I'm proud to be now part of the business community here. I've been here for 25 years, and I'm going to be here for at least another 25 more. Hopefully, my children will take over the business, but I say thank you for having me here. Thank you to Jamie Collins. She acted as a point person for this organization of getting the sweatshirts printed, getting the proper, you know, screen printing materials, availability, and scheduling, et cetera. Also, Paul Shepherd also helped out greatly, as it turns out, there at the end with regard to, you know, the organization of giving, getting everything going. It was 45 boxes of sweatshirts, so it took some, it took some time, it took some organization, and I hope the distribution is going well, and I look forward to perhaps coming in front of this board again, but more importantly, in front of the students and helping them along in any way I can. This is not going to stop here. I want to do this every year, if it's successful, and we'll see if it's successful as we roll it out here. And then I also want to expand the program in any way, and I'm up for ideas. And Monique, and Jamie, and anyone else on the board can call me anytime. My cell number is on my business card. You can call me 24 hours a day, text me with ideas and things and ways I can help. But thank you again for recognizing me here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Feminino's wife had a really great idea of taking just like group pictures of our kids with the hoodies on and just putting them on a billboard that just says Mount Clemens Community Schools. I just think it would be a nice advertisement, and especially if it was big enough that the kids could recognize and see their faces.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think that would be really fun.
They call them posters, not giant billboards, but the poster-sized billboards right off the cask, right off of Grossbeck, right here, very close to downtown, where they could see each other on that board, and as long as they gave us permission, we could put them on the board and advertise Mount Clemens School District as just being, and just having, you know, a level of positivity. Everybody's smiling, everybody's enjoying it, you know, that would be great.
Yeah, pictures of our beautiful kids, that would be nice.
It would. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I would also like to take this evening to honor Neveah Williams. She's our senior point guard for the Mount Clemens Girls Basketball Team. On January 7th, Neveah scored 60 points in a win over the Arts and Technology Academy of Pontiac. In this game, she tied the fourth highest single game total in state girls' basketball history, and followed that with 42 points the next, that same week with a win over Warren, Michigan Collegic. Neveah's doing really, really well in her classes. There are several colleges interested in her for her basketball skills and her academic skills. And I got to say, she's just a great kid. Every time I talk to her, I smile, and Christie's over there shaking her head, yes. See, she's, she's just really a wonderful kid, and I'm very proud that she is a Mount Clemens student. Next. January is our opportunity to acknowledge a very special group of volunteers, elected officials in education. January is School Board Recognition Month, and it gives Mount Clemens Community Schools a way to honor the continuing efforts of our school board members. Earl Rickman, Dr. David McFadden, Janine Walker, Jason Monk, Stephanie O'Neal, Jamie Collins, and Jake Reno. Dedicate countless hours of hard work to improving the education and the lives of our kids here in Mount Clemens. Our school board members take their work very seriously. They dedicate a lot of hours, not just to school board meetings, but there's all kinds of stuff that they do outside of our school board meetings as well, like help organize hoodies and other things that our school district does. They spend their time reading financial reports, reviewing policy, and by the way, there's a special place in heaven for that group of board members, agendas, proposals, and making the difficult and challenging decisions regarding the future of our kids and our district. Our board members are committed to the continuous professional development to ensure that they're up to date on education items, laws, and policy. School Board Recognition Month is a part, it's a national effort coordinated by the Michigan Association of School Boards and the National School Boards Association. Our board members come from all walks of life, as you can see all of us sitting here. What unites them is their desire to make this world and this district a better place for our children. We have ordered a gift for all of our school board members. It's not here yet. It will be here in February. It's special. I think you're really going to like it. We've ordered jackets, and Robin isn't here. He was here earlier. I should have nabbed his jacket. It'll have your name embroidered on the side, Mount Clemens Schools on the back. Anyway, they're really nice, they're just not ready. So we will have those in February, and in February, when we present the jackets to you, we're going to have just a short little reception. There'll be, you know, some cheese crackers, just a few, you know, just a little bit of munchies that people in the community, hopefully. We can have more teachers or more people from the community to come here just to honor you for all that you do, so thank you. I appreciate all of you. And this is the best board I've ever worked for, just saying. It really is. The end of my comments.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Next on the agenda, under informational items, item eight, under committee reports, anything to report from the Business Finance Committee.
It's me.
That's you, yes.
We just met prior to this meeting, and everything's in order, and I don't know if Jason has anything he wants to add, but everything...
Not at this time.
Okay. Everything's good.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lennanberry, Community Coalition. Thank you for that report. Curriculum personnel, the chair is not here.
We haven't had an opportunity to meet yet.
Let's see. Takes us down to E, policy. Is that indicating a first reading, Mr.?
No, no, this is just for information. I know we've, as a board, have had many discussions regarding attendance and fundraising, so this is just for informational purposes, because I know we have new board members who wasn't here when we adopted the attendance policy, so for them to really put their ass to the tenant policy and how that actually works, and that's something I know that the superintendent and her team are diligently working on at this time, also the fundraising side of it also.
Okay, thank you, sir. Legislative Committee, the Legislative Committee, the Macomb County School Boards Association Legislative Committee was scheduled to meet on January 12th. They canceled it till January 25th, I think the new date is, so there is no legislative report coming from the school board side. I don't know, I know the superintendents have, they deal with legislative on their superintendent conference. I don't know if you had any pressing issues coming out of your discussions.
There isn't at this time, where we spend actually most of our meetings, talking about COVID protocols.
Okay, thank you. Moving the agenda along, item nine, board comments. Mrs. Collins?
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Feminino for all the hoodies. It's an incredibly generous gift to give to the entire district. I also grew up in Chesterfield, which as a kid was Mount Clemens, so I do remember when Mount Clemens was the entire area, and you came here for everything. Other than that, I just hope everybody continues to stay healthy, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Reno?
Oh my goodness, so many just thank yous. Thank you to Mr. Feminino for the hoodies, for the support of our students and our community. Thank you to Ms. Beals for the words, you know, my tenure on this board hasn't been long, but I can tell it's a group of people that are passionately committed to our district and our students, and facing some struggles, but doing it with a lot of poise and the best of intentions. Thank you for Partners in Architecture. I'm not totally sure what this is, but thank you. And to our staff, students, their families for making our district great. Stay healthy, stay happy, all that.
Thank you, Ms. Reno. Ms. Walker?
I too want to thank Mr. Feminino for the generous gift and for loving and caring for our kids as much as we do. That means a lot. And to my fellow board members, I wouldn't want to be on a board with anyone else but you guys, so I actually look forward to seeing you when we have meetings, and so thank you for just being a great board. Those are my comments. I'm well.
Okay. Shh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, thank you, Mr. Feminino. It's good to, good to see you in person, seeing you on TV a lot, on the billboard, so guess what? You look just like if you do on TV. So appreciate that, and yes, we will be looking forward to this collaboration with you, you and your firm. I want to say congratulations to Neveah. Neveah, I actually started teaching Neveah basketball in that Mount Clemens gym when her sister played on, and I coached the girls' basketball team. Her older sister is Rosalyn. So I, I remember putting her through the same drills that I was putting, and she was only 10 years old, and I put her through the same drills as the high school girls did. So that doesn't surprise me, her accomplishments, and most importantly, she's just a wonderful young lady. I mean, she's just an absolute joy. She's always smiling. Every time I see her, she gives me a big hug like I ain't seen her in 10 years, so congratulations to Neveah, and I wish everybody, just be safe, be warm, and see you next time. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Dr. McFadden?
Thank you, sir. Apologize for my tardiness today. Mr. Feminino, thank you very much for standing for the students in our district. I really appreciate that, and the board also. Neveah, yes, amazing job, don't matter, that accomplishment is a feat that's hard to undertake, so congratulations to her. Partners in Architect, thank you very much for the gifts and well-being. My next piece, you can say is a PSA or Public Service Announcement, COVID-19. COVID-19 is very, very, very real. We need to have understanding and compassion for both sides of the fence. There's one thing that we can agree on, there's a lot of fear. A lot of people are afraid on both sides of the fence. Some people are more afraid of the virus than they are of the vaccine, and some people are more afraid of the vaccine than are of the virus. But one thing that's common with both of them is fear. So we need to understand that the virus is real, and we need to take all the precautions, precautions for the people around us, including face masks and separating yourselves and protecting the ones around you. You don't have to believe in one thing or another, just believe that what you're doing is helping someone else. So that's my PSA for that, for COVID-19, is understand that everybody's afraid, so before anybody judge one person on one side of the fence and saying these people are those people, just remember we all are Americans, and we all are citizens of this great state of Michigan, so we need to come together and stop putting each other down. So those are my comments, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Like to start off by saying thank you to the staff for the jackets that we'll get next week, I mean, next month. I can understand why they're not ready. There probably going to be some nice jackets, so I truly appreciate that. To Mr. Feminino, I'm going to sound repetitive, but thank you very much for your generous gift to our students, and your even more generous offers to get more involved when you can. Now, you have to be careful what you say, because you might get seven calls here tonight.
You already got them already.
You said you want to get involved, but you got, seven people got several different ways they want to get you involved.
I seen them over there on the phone, y'all thinking you getting them already.
But seriously, again, really sincerely thank you for all your offers and your assistance that you plan to bring to the district. We really appreciate that, and more importantly, our students, I'm sure, will value and benefit by anything, any participation that you provide in the district here for the students of the Mount Clemens Community School District. Neveah Williams, only thing I hate that I'm not able to be there to announce their games because they start at 5:00, and I get off of work at 5:00. Like Mr. Monk mentioned, he coached her daughter, his older sister Roz, she was an outstanding student athlete. Her brother, outstanding student athlete, and I just wished I could be there on the mic to give her the same kind of hype and love and appreciation that I was able to give her sister when she was playing basketball, but maybe I'll be able to sneak out of work one day early for the last couple of home games. To score 1,000 points, that is an outstanding achievement. Now, you have, even the naysayers or the haters are going to say, well, you're playing, you're playing a Class D schedule. It doesn't matter. She's playing whoever the teams that they're participating against, and she is still achieving at a high level, not only on the basketball court, but in the classroom. It'd be one thing if you were just a good basketball player and had no future, no foreseeable future, because you didn't have the grades to complement your athletic skill set. One thing in this district that other districts took a while to do, we upped the grade point average that you had to have to be a student athlete here in the Mount Clemens Community School District, with all other school districts, not all of, but many other school districts, was following the basic state guideline, which were very low, and this board a long time ago said, no, we have to have more goals for our student athletes to shoot for other than just passing one class. So we were one of the forerunners in having higher level of eligibility to participate than the state required. Let's see, where, what is it?
State required.
Thank you, sir. All right, now, it takes me to one thing that I'm proud of this board about, we, and it's this board, the seven that's sitting here today, this board, and piggybacking on what Doc McFadden was talking about, doesn't matter what side of the fence you're on regarding the COVID issue, that you should, you know, respect each other and adhere to some kind of protocol. I'm proud that this board took the stance, whether right, wrong, or indifferent, that when we opened school up in September, that everybody that came into our buildings, that rode our buses, had to be, have some type of face covering on. We were the first district in Macomb County to do so. Everybody, I got calls saying, you're going to lose students because people aren't going to want to, you know, have, you know, mandatory that they, that their students have masks on, how are you going to keep the mask on the two-year, on the, on the first graders and the kindergarteners? If I, if my recall is correct, we gained students because of the fact that we instituted a mandatory face covering policy that started with this board. We didn't have all the drama and issues at the school board meetings that other districts had that waited to vote on this in August or September. Matter of fact, I couldn't, I can't recall anybody coming to the microphone during the open board meetings from the public disagreeing with the decision that this board made was to go mandatory face covering for in-person schools, so it could have been issues for this board in this district, but we, we took, we made that decision, and the results were we've been back in school, person, in person, since the beginning of the school. We didn't close after Thanksgiving, after the break. We didn't, we didn't go remotely after the break that we just had over the New Year. So just stay vigilant, even though I know this is going on year two, and everybody is COVID-weary, but remain vigilant, continue to keep yourself safe, to keep yourself healthy, not just for you, it's for other people around you, because you wear the mask not only to protect yourself, but for the safety of others, because you might be able to withstand the effects of catching COVID, but you might catch COVID and pass it along to somebody who can't withstand it. So like all my colleagues have stated, stay healthy, stay safe. Here, here we are in 2022, and this year is moving right along, and just stay healthy, stay vigilant, stay safe, and those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Monk?
Support.
Second. Ms. Collins?
Ladies first, ladies first.
Question, no, no question, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at seven oh three PM.